Good evening. Welcome to our June 5th, our regular board meeting. Thanks everyone for coming out tonight. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Again, welcome everyone for being here. At this time, I'd like to lead us in invocation and when we're finished, if you'd stand for the pledge of allegiance. Please bow with me if you would. My grace and heavenly Father, we humbly come to you tonight, Lord. Thank you so much for your mercy and your grace. Lord, I pray for this board. I pray for strength and wisdom as we make decisions for Stanley County. Thank you so much for allowing us to be here tonight, Lord. We pray, Lord, for those who are sick and afflicted in our communities, to continue to lift them up. Lord, we pray for our police, our fire, our EMS that protect and service daily. Lord, we pray especially for our military and their families for the ultimate sacrifices they make. These things we ask in your precious name that we pray. Amen. Y'all would stand for the pledge.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners, you should have the agenda in front of you. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So move.
Motion, I have a second.
Second.
Second, I was all over the place, Tyler. Commissioner Hatlen, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Thank you. Public comment. I've had several folks to sign up for public comment and I'll just go down the list. Our first one is Rodney Urie, Chief of the Fire Department of Oakboro. Mr. Urie. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. How are you? Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Rodney Urie. I'm the Fire Chief of Oakboro Fire Department. This is Shay Morton. He is a deputy chief with us and he's also on our Board of Directors. As you guys know, we have put in for a four cent increase in our fire tax. You all should have received the letter that we sent to our emergency manager. We got some things that we wanted to add to that. And after that, you can ask us some questions about, whatever questions that you may have. The first thing, Oakboro Fire Department has the largest fire district served by one fire station in the county. Other than Albemarle and West Stanley, who have 24-hour coverage, 365, were the second busiest volunteer fire department in the county. Our call volume has increased 30% in the last five years. It is also, if you look at the last 10 years, it's increased 75%. We have zero debt. One of the things we're asking for in our increase, we want to buy equipment such as apparatus. We are currently, we don't have room to put any extra apparatus that we purchase. So also, there will be a building that we will have to build to house those apparatus. We also are looking at doing staffing for 24 hours, four personnel, 24 hours, 365. That gets a little bit expensive. $15 an hour for, to cover that would be $524,000 a year to do that. At our current tax rate, we are, our income is a little over $500,000 a year. So we can't do that increase. We can't do the staffing without an increase. We have, in our bank, we have, it sounds like a lot, but I'll finish. And it'll sound like as much, but we have a million dollars, $82,336 in the bank. With the staffing that we are wanting to do to help serve the community, serve our district, and the building that we would have to build to house the equipment that we buy. Just apparatus, which is a tanker, it would be between $350,000 and $400,000 for that one piece of apparatus. We already have a tanker. It's 3,000 gallons. It serves our district well. It has, it's a 2002 model. But we would like to purchase the second tanker to add to that. We have area in our district, a lot of area that is non-hydrated. And then we have the parts of our area that do have hydrates, the water pressure and the flow is low. So this second tanker would help us to provide the coverage for fire protection that we need. An aerial, the things on this list, you know, they're all priority. They're all something that, that needs to be happened, needs to happen as soon as we can make it happen. The aerial, we do see a need in the future to have a ladder truck, but that's slower on the priority list. The changes and stuff that we want to do, we hope that this is going to be a fix. Fix is not the proper word, but a 25-year solution for that. Our original fire station, we have some, some options in the letter that you guys received that gives three different options about when it comes to our building, our structure. Our building was built in 1958. It's been added on to, slash remodeled, four times since it was built. Volunteering these days, it's not just a county thing or a Oakboro thing or even a state, it's nationwide. A lot of people don't want to volunteer no more. And your younger generation coming up, they don't seem to care about it a whole lot. So it's, it's taken a toll on us as a fire, a volunteer fire department to try to provide the coverage and protection that we need to our citizens that, that pay tax money for us. So right now, our average response as far as personnel is 3.4. If you look at all of our calls throughout the whole year, and this is from 2022, as far as people arriving in a fire truck is 1.9. And arriving in a POV is 1.3. So we currently have two people Monday through Friday that are paid to be there. One, the first one comes in at 7:00 AM in the morning and that person leaves at 3:00 PM. And the second person comes in at 10:00 PM, 10:00 AM and leaves at 6:00 PM. So that's what our coverage is right at the moment. We have 32 members on our roster. All 32 are not active. You got anything else to add? Do you guys have any questions for us as for the reason for our request?
I know when we talked Rodney that I asked for a timeline on different projects. Are y'all working on that?
Well, kind of, the things that, that we've listed in the letter that we sent to you guys, we're a little bit behind, you know, in accomplishing what we, what we should have already been working on. So the things that we've mentioned in this letter, we deem them to be priority and it's things that need to happen as soon as we can make them happen. The aerial, like I mentioned earlier, it would be lower on the priority list. It's not something that we really see that we need in the next couple of years. But what all we've listed on the letter, we see that being pretty important.
And the aerial being the 1.2 to 1.8 million dollars?
That would be for a new one. But what we would probably try to do is look for one that's used or maybe that has been refurbished for probably a third of that cost.
So you got everything that you asked for. What kind of, I mean, kind of idea of when you might decide to do a new fire station? Or remodel the existing and the timeline of that?
I would probably say it starts right after 4th of July.
Certain decisions that we would make in regards to a structure as far as its location also plays a factor in whether or not the 4th of July celebration goes on. That's, this is 65 years that we've been doing that. We would like to see that tradition continue. It does help in funding for us as well. But we don't want to see that go away. So it kind of depends on what we did as a structure, where, what we decided to do as a structure, which the option that that would be is the most expensive option that we have listed in the letter. So we think the option, the first option that's listed on here is probably the, the one that makes the most sense to do. With the fact that our station's been, you know, built originally in 58 and it's been added on to three or four times, I think it's kind of time to, to stop adding on to it.
Rodney, y'all got several pieces of property. Have y'all entertained, maybe selling off those pieces? Do you have enough room where the existing station is to accomplish?
We do have enough room. If, if you're familiar with where our fire station sits, it's in between West Third and West Fourth and then college is in front of it. There's a gravel lot that is at the end, closer to, it's at the Third Street side. That's where we had planned on, if we build that, the station there, that's where we plan on doing it. The field across the street stays open. We could still do our 4th of July celebration as long as we have personnel to continue to do it. Willing to help do it. But we do own the property across the street, which is pretty much a city block. It's the city block. That's where all the carnival rides set up at. So yeah, we have location to build. We wouldn't have to purchase property to do that.
Rodney, I know when we talked, you told me how many calls you all did in a year's time. Would you repeat that for me?
We, this past year, 2022, we ran 622. And that's, you know, up 30% from five years ago.
Commissioner Shuda?
Yeah, I assume with, with Charlotte Pipe there, that's kind of y'all's the first responders to get there. Did you guys have to anticipate getting more equipment or different type of equipment, the service, potential needs out there?
I don't know so much about different equipment as I would. The personnel being there 24 hours a day would help a lot. You know, getting there quick, making those first initial decisions as far as whether it's a fire or a rescue situation or whatever, you know, it may be. Those four people getting there and making that decision quick and able to get to work makes a big difference.
Currently, you'll have a fire insurance rating of six. Is that correct?
Correct.
And that basically controls?
A five.
Five. So you're a five. So that, that all sets a lot of property tax there probably with insurance savings, I'm sure.
It does more, when, when you drop a five or below, that affects commercial properties way more than it does residential. I don't know of a, a insurance company that a homeowner would benefit below a five. But we were, we technically were a four. When they did our rating, the evaluator, he made a mistake in our rating. And when Shay and I talked with him on the phone, he told us, you know, we're all human and human makes, humans make mistakes. So I'm going to tell you the mistake that we made, or I made, and I'll show you what the difference is in your rating. And it would have dropped us to a four if we would have had him change it. But we felt we would rather be a strong five than a weak four. But since then, when we talked with him on the phone, he told us different things that we could do to improve our rating. And we feel pretty confident that we can make that happen. You know, a four, maybe even a three. On commercial, it would. Yeah, commercial properties on your, on their insurance premiums, it would help. Correct. Yes, sir.
I have a quick question. You said that your call volume has increased 75% in the last 10 years, correct?
Correct.
Do we know, when is the last time Oakboro did see an increase in this tax?
We're the lowest in the county. That doesn't give a reason to, to go up, but we are a six and we are the lowest in the county. The next one I think is New London and I think they're 7.5 maybe.
Anything else? Yes, sir.
Rodney, I appreciate you guys doing the 4th of July because that's what allowed you to keep going and not raise taxes. And I think that shows the public that you're willing to work.
We are.
And to have that instead of just reaching for a handout. So I appreciate that. You know, by saying that, like, like we talked the other day, if we came up here and told the public we were going to increase property tax four cent, then they would hang us all and run us off. And so I don't think a lot of people realize that when our tax goes up in their district, that's the same thing as property tax in that district. I know where you're coming from. I'm not saying you don't need this stuff, but they are, you know, as well as I do, everything costs more. You guys are seeing it with your equipment. But the public out here is seeing it too, at the grocery store and the gas pump and doctors and everything else. So please take that in consideration if we can work something out.
Right. And you know, we, we all live in our fire district as well. So it ain't that we're exempt from it. So if our taxes go up, we pay it too. You know, and the thing with, like I spoke with you on the phone, you know, having four people show up on the same apparatus within five minutes, you know, of you calling 911. I think that's, that's pretty strong. And it does make a difference, you know, in the outcome of the incident, whether it be a cardiac arrest or it be a house fire or whatever, whatever the call may be.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Morton, thank y'all.
Thank you.
The next one I have on my list is Mr. Bill Sorensen. Mr. Sorensen.
Esteemed Chairman and honorable members of the Stanley County Board of Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, I stand for you as a private citizen, a Stanley County resident, taxpayer, and lifelong educator. I do not represent any elected board or officially sanctioned position this evening. My comments are my own. I often refer to the duality of intellect as that is simply based on two foundations, what we know and what we believe we know. For example, I know most, if not all of you, placed your hand on the Bible and swore an oath. I did the same. I believe that such an act is not merely a ceremonial gesture and photo op, but rather a sacrament, sacred covenant made in the eyes of God Almighty Himself. I know that we all swore to uphold Article Nine of the North Carolina Constitution, which mandates a free and equitable education for all children. I believe that based on current and projected local funding issues, we are failing that oath as a county. I know several of you up on the dais are products of Stanley County schools. I am one actually myself for the last part of my, my educational career, secondary schools. And I recognize two beautiful people up there as students from way, way back. They didn't have the courage to come down to my shop, but still have fond memories of them. I believe the same generation that paid taxes and funded your and my educations full well expect us to do the same for the current generation. It's actually an ethical issue in my opinion. I know many, many folks in Stanley County are struggling against the socio-economic burdens of high inflation and a broken economy. My own household is feeling this pinch. I believe however, that the good people of Stanley County are on the whole upright and righteous people that support our community schools and when our children all succeed. I also know that most recent additions to your board are not responsible for the reduced revenue streams caused by passport actions. I do believe however, all of you have an obligation to either live up to the campaign promises to adequately support our schools or at least have the courage to admit that you wish to privatize and shutter the community schools. 94th into state and local funding based on the, the state commission, county commission organization, that data lags two years, is an embarrassment of epic proportions for all citizens in this fair community. The proposed budget we've seen so far will only serve to exacerbate critical financial problems for all of our schools. Therefore, I implore you as a board to do the courageous thing, to do the right thing and properly fund Stanley County schools on a per basic, per pupil basis. The numbers coming out of Raleigh already project us to pick up a couple hundred more kids. Last year, they were off, they underestimated and I expect the same kind of thing is going to happen. Ignoring the plight of our bus drivers and families left in a bind this past year does not help our situation. All of our classified employees deserve better and it is indeed your responsibility to make it happen. Do the right thing. Stanley County citizens deserve nothing less. And the last thing I'll say is I do appreciate every single one of you up there. I know what job you is, I wouldn't want your job. It's just, I understand what you're going through. But my passion, my heart is in doing what's right for our kids. I just don't think we're doing that as a county. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. The next one I have on my public comment is regarding a, an item we have, we have coming up. You're more than welcome to speak now. There will be a public hearing on the storage buildings and storage units. You can speak now or if you want to wait and hold that off until the, the public hearing. Mr. Estrich?
You don't have the photo at the place, do you?
No, we'll have that later on in the meeting when it comes up. That's what I'm saying. If you wanted to wait until that item comes up and then speak.
Okay.
You're more than welcome to.
I'll wait.
Mr. Mullis, same thing?
Yes, I'll, I'll wait until it comes up.
Okay. And then I have an Ellen Gaston and she, you didn't list what you wanted to talk about. So you want to talk about that or something different? Okay. All right. Thanks. I just want to make sure I got everybody. Thank you. All right. Our next item is you are a wampus cats and our presenter is Mr. Jerry Minn, General Manager. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. And did I notice on that camera, you've got a baseball tie on?
I do.
There you go. Let's let everybody see that. Let's let everybody see that. Uh, thank you very much for having me, and thank you all for listening for a couple of minutes. As we mentioned, my name is Jerry Minn, I am the General Manager of our new college wood bat baseball team that started play last week in Albemarle. Uh, we are called the Uwari Wampus Cats for a reason. We see ourselves as a regional team, not an Albemarle team. We're a Stanley County team. Uh, we couldn't be more excited, we couldn't have been more excited to to announce when West Stanley Girls won their state championship at the end of our game, give the update on the day before on their, on their, on their journey. Um, and and we're excited to include members from, a few players from throughout, throughout Stanley County and and really all the way through Charlotte and the Concord and North Stanley areas. So our team, as I mentioned, is a wood bat baseball team. Uh, we are an opportunity for current college players or rising freshmen, see, uh, high school players who have graduated already, uh, to improve their skills, to play baseball in a competitive environment uh, in what has, it continues to become an increasingly improved facility in Albemarle. Our fellows have already grown in their first week of play. Uh, they're hitting the ball better, they're throwing the ball better, they've really come together as a team. And and I think that's the hallmark of what we're trying to achieve for the players, is that kind of an environment. I mentioned Don Montgomery Park, right on US fifty-two in Albemarle. Uh, we've worked hand in hand with the town to improve that facility, and we've made some, what we feel like are some wonderful additions. Uh, in in addition to the basics of the field, uh, we've added additional seating, we've added some new unique seating to the area. Uh, we've, we've expanded the concession stand, we have a giant picnic area for families. Uh, so, so we've really working hard for the public to create an environment and a place that they like to come, uh, and that they'd like to watch some really competitive baseball. The business community, not just in Albemarle, but throughout Stanley County, could not have been more supportive. They have come out in droves, uh, they've provided sponsor funding for a lot of what we've been able to accomplish. Uh, and they've really helped spread the word across the area for our baseball team. Uh, we we look forward to the rest of the summer, mostly in order to provide that kind of fun, inexpensive, simple entertainment for an area that truly loves baseball. Uh, and and it's one of the reasons why we picked, we picked Stanley County. So thank you for having me today, uh, and I certainly can answer any questions, if anybody has any regarding our team and and what our plans are over the next few months.
Thank you, sir, any questions for?
Could you give us ticket price?
Ticket prices are seven dollars in advance, eight dollars at the gate. Uh, if you buy them in advance, there's a ninety-nine cent fee, so that makes it eight dollars. So, uh, three, three years, three years old and under are free, uh, while every seat and every, every other attendee is eight dollars. Our games are predominantly over the weekends, uh, we have six thirty start times, with the exception of some, some of our Sunday games. Father's Day, for example, is one o'clock. Uh, this coming Sunday, our game's also at one o'clock. Uh, Fourth of July, we, we, we will not have, we will not be presenting any fireworks at our game, so we moved our game to four P M, giving the public an opportunity to come, have some fun, eat some hot dogs, some pizza, and then get, uh, and have enough time to leave the stadium and and go see fireworks wherever they they choose.
Do you have season tickets?
We do, we still offer season tickets, yes, sir, uh, they are one hundred and twenty-five dollars. We have a twenty-five game season, uh, I'm sorry, twenty-five home games, and we've already played, uh, three, four of those. Uh, so we have twenty-one games left. Um, but, uh, and then we also have fifteen road games, uh, as we complete about a forty-five game schedule this summer. So Wilmington and Boone are our two farthest road trips. Uh, the Edenton Steamers are coming here to Albemarle, so that's three hours, three and a half-ish, uh, maybe a little more than that even. So that's the farthest away team that we have. But, um, both Boone's team and the team in Wilmington are part of the Coastal Plains League, which is the top college baseball league in the state. Uh, and they've been great partners for us and for our other team, which is in Winston-Salem, uh, over the last three years. So they they've been kind enough to host us for a couple of games, and we'll return the favor whenever they want.
Yes, sir.
Couple of things, first of all, thank you for coming down, you, he came down to, we came down to Anson High and talked to my sports and marketing class. Phenomenal about the, how you guys developed the name and everything else, you did a fantastic job. I've been, I think, all four of your home games so far. Hey, if you haven't been out there, it's a nice evening out, the weather's been perfect. And they have a partnership now with Uwari Brew Brewery, so you can get a beer down there and sit down and watch, watch the game. It's just really, really nice, I do have a question. Someone asked me, those yellow seats down up front there, are they for sponsors, or they, or?
So the yellow seats that are currently installed are actual stadium seats that have been reconditioned and brought, and that we purchased and brought down here. Those currently, uh, the complement that we have are for our top sponsors. Um, we have sixteen additional seats that we hope to have installed sometime over the next week or two, and those will be for general public. And those sponsor seats, um, are, we, we, we reserve them up through the second inning, but if, if they, if they don't show, we take those signs away and then they become open for everybody. Uh, and in addition, we have, um, if you haven't been, or if you've seen some pictures, we have some wine barrels that are right behind those yellow seats. And just today, uh, we received, uh, twenty additional seats, bar stools, that will be located around those wine barrels. Uh, so that provides some additional seating. Uh, just in the last week, we've added almost a hundred extra, about a hundred extra seats to the facility from what we had on opening day on Monday, Memorial Day.
Like I said, I think it's a good product for people to come out and watch and support a thing, and Albemarle Parks and Rec has done a phenomenal job building that whole area up, and for those of y'all who like to walk and ride a bike, they were doing this anyway, they fixed that, the pavement on the Roger Snyder Greenway in front of that, they used to have all the bumps in it that smooth. And I tell you what, I'm so, I'm so glad you guys are in Stanley County.
Thank you, it's, uh, it's been an exciting, uh, it's been an exciting journey since January. Uh, and and we have, uh, we've been, we've, we couldn't be more thankful for the support that everyone's provided us.
Mr. Minn, the other teams, you got the Wampus Cats, Disco Turkeys, the Steamers, Yard Goats?
The Yard Goats, yes, sir.
And?
Uh, we play the Queen City Corn Dogs, uh, the, uh, the Royals, uh, it's, it's one of those, um, uh, one of those fun parts about these, these games are the nicknames of the teams. Um, you know, and it's easy trivia questions, too, asking what's a Disco Turkey, and people just don't know. Mostly because, mostly because we made it up.
What a Yard Goat is.
A Yard.
You told us, I'm trying to explain what the actual Yard Goat is to people.
Yeah, we gave people overnight to Google that, but, uh, but yeah, Yard Goat, uh, the Yard Goats are a team that play in Greensboro. Uh, and in fact, there's a, another Yard Goat team that plays in Hartford, Connecticut, in the minor leagues for the, for, uh, oh my gosh, I've forgotten, well, anyway, I'm sorry? The Rockies, there you go, see, our resident expert, I should have just looked over there. But, uh, but a Yard Goat, uh, for those of you familiar with the train business, a Yard Goat is the small, very strong engine used in a yard to move train cars around. Um, and others will tell you that it's also a, a, a hauler for trucks and and grain carts and things on a farm as well, so either definition works, a train engine or a really strong truck.
Thank you very much, sir.
You got it.
And good luck.
Thank you very much.
Our next item's item number three, our fiscal twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget, public hearing and workshop dates, and our presenter's Andy Lucas, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Per General Statute one fifty-nine twelve, you're required to hold a public hearing prior to adopting your budget. Um, as you know, we presented the manager's recommended budget back on May fifteenth. Um, and so been about three weeks since that time and gotten feedback from folks in the community and certainly members of this board. But we'll ask for a public hearing this evening related to the budget. And then when that concludes and you close the public hearing, um, the board will need to set some dates for the budget workshops over the next couple of weeks. Uh, and we're tentatively scheduled to adopt the budget on Tuesday, um, June twentieth. And and typically, we do that in the morning so we can kind of get it over, get that meeting over and done with and go about the business day, so. But I'll be happy to answer any questions before you open up the public hearing.
All right, any questions for County Manager Lucas? All right. At this time, I will declare the public hearing open for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget. If anyone is like to speak either for or against that budget. All right, hearing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Uh, meeting dates, thirteenth, fourteenth, or?
I think we recommended the thirteenth and fifteenth, which was, uh, which is a Tuesday and a Thursday.
What time are you looking at, sir?
I think we've done it three o'clock in the past, uh, three or four, um, which is, you know, as staff, we always appreciate that. If we can, you know, start those and we can wrap them up by five, six o'clock. Um, but you know, we're, it's, they're, they're your meetings and it's your decision, so we'll do, we'll do whatever. But, um, those, those are the dates, the thirteenth and the fifteenth we throw out, but we're flexible.
All right, I'm okay with either one. What were the times?
Um, we, we've typically started them around three or four o'clock. Um, that way they go, and typically the board's appetite in terms of the length of them is usually about, uh, two, two and a half hours max. And so, um, you know, that way we're done by, if we start at three, we're done by, you know, five, five-thirty, if we start at four, we're done by, you know, six, six-thirty, so.
The only thing I have Thursday is a Parker's Mental Health Meeting that starts at six. If we could start at three, I think we could be there, I don't know what everybody else.
I'm good with those two times.
Three o'clock?
Yeah, three o'clock.
Everybody good, three o'clock, the thirteenth and the fifteenth?
That'd be great. And then we'll recess tonight's meeting, and then, um, then we reconvene it on the thirteenth, and then again, we'll recess the one on the thirteenth and reconvene on the fifteenth, so. Thank you, appreciate it.
Uh, next item I have is a department head presentation, Cooperative Extension, and our presenter is Miss Molly Alexey, County Extension Director. Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners, how are you? I do have a handout. Did that in lieu of a PowerPoint, that way you could take it with you. Good evening, Commissioners and Stanley County citizens. Uh, my name is Molly Alexey, I am the North Carolina Cooperative Extension Director here in Stanley County. Uh, North Carolina Cooperative Extension is a strategic partnership of N C State University and N C A and T State University, as well as Stanley County. Stanley County Extension professionals translate research-based education from our state's land grant systems into everyday solutions through programs focused on agriculture and and food, health and nutrition, and four H youth development. Our Stanley County Cooperative Extension staff is proud to serve the citizens of Stanley County by addressing issues and needs as identified by advisory groups, existing clients, and community partners. Cooperative Extension provides educational opportunities to Stanley County citizens through workshops, training, and information requests via telephone, radio broadcasts, the newspaper, educational mailings, face-to-face contacts with citizens, and website visits. Extension continually strives through educating and empowering the community to maximize the county's return on investment. Last year, Extension agents reported four thousand seven hundred and nine face-to-face contacts, which included three hundred and forty-four hours of workshops, seminars, and hands-on demonstration. Extension responded to a hundred and ninety-six thousand nine hundred and seven citizens through telephone, social media, email, and other non-face-to-face methods. Four hundred and thirty-nine volunteers worked with Extension agents to extend the outreach efforts of Cooperative Extension programming by contributing four thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight hours of volunteer work. These hours conservatively valued at twenty-nine ninety-five an hour totaled a hundred and forty-three thousand four hundred and one dollars. In addition to this number, forty-one thousand and fifty-four dollars was collected through donations, grants, and user fees to expand, to expand programming and opportunities for Stanley County citizens. Haley Cowell is our Family Consumer Science Agent, and her goal is to provide a wealth of educational programs that address public health issues, improve economic well-being, and help people make healthier, better-informed decisions. Programs range from food safety and food preservation, cooking classes, budgeting, and healthy living programs in our schools, churches, and communities. So far in twenty twenty-three, Haley's program successes include completion of our Lift Program, which is a lifelong improvement through fitness together. Um, we just trained four new Extension Master Food Volunteers. Uh, we had nutrition programming for both of our senior centers. Uh, we had a Senior Spirit Day, a School Health Fair, and currently she's offering a Home Canning Series. Uh, there's more details in your handout. Four H Youth Development Program is the largest youth organization in North Carolina and is open to all youth ages five to eighteen. Uh, Michaela Vick was our Four H Youth Development Agent. Um, she currently left in May to take a job with Animal Science Department at N C State. Um, but we've advertised and will be conducting interviews June fifteenth with hopes of hiring quickly in order to continue the momentum our program has made. Um, Four H offers a wide variety of programs, projects, curricula, activities. Popular Four H activities include presentations, judging contests, project record books, and overnight camp. Um, we just recently held our Four H Summer Fund registrations. We have fifteen camps for kids to take this summer. They all filled up very quickly, and we're really excited about a fun-filled summer. Um, we'll also be taking six kids to overnight camp at Camp Millstone. Uh, this spring, we sent out larvae for butterflies to all of the kindergarten classes, and, um, the, the kids had a lot of fun releasing those monarch butterflies into the community. Kaitlyn Stigall is our Livestock Extension Agent. She works to provide educational programming for large and small-scale livestock producers in Stanley County. In twenty twenty-two, livestock sales reached sixty-nine million eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and five hundred and nine dollars, uh, making livestock a vital part of our county economy. Uh, programs were offered in several areas to educate farmers to make their operations more efficient and profitable. In twenty twenty-three, so far, forty-nine livestock producers have increased their knowledge of livestock management in the areas of pasture management, nutrition management, and reproduction. One, one-on-one training, as well as group workshops, have been offered to address calf evaluation and management, and management and care of pastures. In the area of youth livestock, forty-one youth have increased their knowledge of livestock management and showmanship through Four H Club Meetings and Showmanship Clinics. So far, nine hours of pesticide continued education credits have been offered with eighteen licensed applicators receiving credit. We have just finished the N C Farm School, hosted in Stanley County this year. During this eight-week program, twenty-five prospective farmers in the area learned the basics of farm business management. There are big plans for the livestock program in Stanley County for the remainder of twenty twenty-three. Four more hours of pesticide credits will be offered before the recertification window closes in September. The Four H Embryology Program is in full swing with quail chicks hatching at all the Stanley County elementary schools and second-grade classrooms. More livestock showmanship clinics will be offered in the next two months before the beginning of the showmanship circuit. In July, a grazing management workshop will be held at Stanley, at a Stanley County farm in conjunction with the Amazing Grazing Program at N C State University. The Youth Livestock Show, our biggest livestock event of the year, is right around the corner. Uh, we will host this year's show in conjunction with the Aggreg Civic Day on August nineteenth and have plans to add sheep in our lineup this year, so I hope everybody will come out to the Aggreg Civic Center on August nineteenth. Uh, Lydia Stigall joined our team as a Small Farms Agent on May fifteenth. Uh, she'll be working with farmers' markets as well as new farmers. She will be dealing with the N C Farm App and any new or small-scale farmers needing help with business or marketing plans. Lydia graduated from N C State University with a degree in Agriculture Business Management and a minor in Animal Science. Andrew Pfeifer started as our new Horticulture Agent on June first. Uh, he will be working with the Extension Master Gardeners and Consumer and Commercial Horticulture. Uh, he will be working with the Extension Master Gardeners and consumer and commercial horticulture, um, citizens. Uh, his focus is on sustainable best management practices and creating diverse habitats for pollinators and wildlife. He will be expanding the demonstration guarding, garden, and assisting homeowners and other local entities. Andrew, Andrew graduated from NC State University with a degree in Horticulture Science with minors in Entomology and Biological Sciences. We also have a NC State Summer Intern, Abigail White, who joined our team, and she has been a huge help getting ready for all of our Summer Fun classes. Um, if you haven't been out to the Aggreg Civic Center, uh, we've had lots of explosions going on. Um, they have definitely broke ground, um, for our livestock and event center. We're really excited and, um, we thank you guys. Uh, there's gonna be so much, so many more opportunities and fun things that we'll be able to do because of that wonderful facility. Um, we've also expanded some of our demonstration garden. Um, we've added a gazebo, um, with a little help from our foresters, um, to help build it. But, um, do y'all have any questions for me? Yes.
Have y'all started back doing the continuing classes? Like, we used to have open houses and we got to come up teach those classes to our current blocks. Have y'all started back doing that?
Um, we don't actually, we'll go out and do a, um, program for the schools and the classrooms, kind of like a guest speaker or something, um, but as long as a teacher just calls us.
Any questions? Yes, sir.
Just a couple of comments. Uh, thank you so much for the report. Man, sixty-nine million dollars worth of livestock sales, that's, that's huge. And I'm, I'm looking forward to the, you know, the livestock arena to finally be built. Then finally, the, the Ag Day that y'all have out there in August.
Yeah.
That surprised me. When I started going to those things, that is a huge event. And that's one, there, there's thousands of people that come out to that. And it's one of the biggest attended events that we have. I don't know how we don't count these things. I would say that's one of the biggest events we have in Stanley County every year is when people come out to that. And y'all do a great job on that, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. Any?
Thank you. All right, next item is resolution to accept our funds for a countywide sewer master plan study. And our presenter is Mr. Dwayne Wingo, the Utilities Director. Dr. Wingo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Stanley County has received a letter of intent to fund the Stanley, Stanley County Utilities Department grant application to complete a countywide sewer master plan study. The amount of the funding is one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. As required by the intent to fund letter, the County Board of Commissioners must formally accept the funds by resolution. This project will employ an engineering firm to provide the study of anticipated growth impacts in Stanley County over the next five, ten, and twenty-year period to determine what sanitary sewer infrastructure and capital improvements will be needed to accommodate the future population, as well as rehab and/or replacement of sections of existing sanitary sewer collection system that may become necessary. Uh, this study may be used to facilitate the next sewer SDF study that will be required in the year 2027. Uh, staff is requesting approval of the attached resolution.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Wingo? Pleasure to the board. Yes, sir.
Mr. Wingo, was this, uh, study performed before we done the upgrade on the West Stanley Sewer Treatment Plant?
We did an SDF study in 2022, and the West Stanley wastewater treatment plant was included as part of the SDF study at that time. We do have to renew the SDF every five years, 'cause what we approved was a five-year plan at that time.
And this plan will cover that too?
From five to ten year on, or whatever we haven't completed in that five year, we'll probably, you know, move forward to the next five to ten-year increment.
Anyone else?
I make a motion we.
We will the resolution?
Funds by resolution.
Have a motion. Have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Atlin? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, next item is Stanley County Aging Funding Plan, HCCBG twenty-three twenty-four, and our presenter is Ms. Pamela Sullivan, Senior Services Director. Good evening, Pamela.
Good evening, Chairman Efrid, and fellow Commissioners. I'm here tonight to present the Aging Funding Plan on behalf of the Senior Services Department. This funding plan is, um, the funds that are used for our aging programs in Stanley County. It is the Home and Community Care Block Grant, which we call HCCBG. Those funds are used for our nutrition services, transportation services, in-home services, and senior center operations. If you break those down, we have two levels of in-home services. Level one, which is home management, and level two, which is personal care. Our nutrition services, we have the Home Delivered Meal Program, which many folks refer to as the Meals on Wheels Program, and the Congregate Nutrition Site. We offer general transportation as well as medical transportation, and then other funds are used for senior center operations. This year, we are receiving five hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred thirty thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars in HCCBG funds. The Aging Advisory Board met, discussed, and distributed those funds across those services and voted on those for the next fiscal year. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those, um, otherwise I ask for the approval of our funding plan.
Ms. Sullivan, any questions for Ms. Sullivan?
I make a motion to approve the funding plan as, as presented.
I have a motion. Have a second? Second, Commissioner Crump. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose. Motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, next item, item number seven, CR twenty-three dash oh-one, Ridgecrest Road, Conditional District. And our presenter is Ms. Bailey Enrich. Bailey.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, give me one second. I'm gonna pull up this slideshow. Okay, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, um, the first request I have before you tonight is CR twenty-three oh-one. This is a request by Sammy Estridge Jr., um, for a conditional district zoning for an approximately three-acre portion of a tract containing thirty-five point zero nine acres located at two-four-three-five-two Ridgecrest Road in Locust. He has proposed the parcel be rezoned from RA to Ridgecrest Road Conditional District. Mr. Estridge owns the entire parcel, which contains a home and three outbuildings. The purpose of this rezoning is to allow for six storage facility buildings containing two hundred units. There will be two forty-unit facilities with each being twenty by ten, two twenty-unit facilities with each being twenty by twenty, and two forty-unit facilities with each being ten by fifteen. There will also be a designated area for open storage of boats and RVs on the rear portion of the property. A traditional rezoning would require that the property be rezoned to how-a-business. Mr. Estridge prefers to have this designated as a conditional district, which will establish certain restrictions on the property and allow its use for a mini warehouse storage facility and nothing else. The project will have an eight-foot chain-link fence, um, with barbed wire surrounding it. According to the most recent traffic count, which is 2018 by NC DOT, Ridgecrest Road sees an estimated eleven hundred cars per day, and Substation Road sees an estimated three hundred and forty cars per day. There will be no well or septic systems placed on this property in relation to the use. Therefore, there will be no soil evaluation tests required. The list of conditions that have been agreed upon by the property owner, um, are in a separate document that were made available to you. Chambers Engineering provided a site plan for the property displayed on all of the units, as well as proposed signage, lighting to be used for the project. The Planning Board met on May eighth, 2023 concerning this project and heard concerns from numerous residents of the Ridgecrest community. The project is adjacent to the Ridgecrest Presbyterian Church Cemetery and is located in a rural preservation area per the current Stanley County Land Use Plan. While the proposed conditions offered some amount of protection for the community, the Board determined that the impacts would not be appropriate in the rural preservation area and that the preferred use would be better to remain agricultural. The Planning Board unanimously recommended denial of the rezoning request. This slide, um, is the list of proposed conditions that, um, are currently set forth, um, and I'm just gonna list those out. No temporary parking shall be provided with the project. Ex, access to storage facility will be allowed twenty-four-seven via access code at an unmanned gate. Lighting shall be on motion detectors. Fence shone around the site shall be an eight-foot tall chain-link fence with barbed wire on top. Driveway and access road within the site shall be gravel. A paved apron shall be provided at Ridgecrest Road. Storage units, um, shall be five foot tall. No storage unit will be climate-controlled. No on-site dumpster will be provided. Storage unit paint color shall be beige with green trim. Roof shall be black. No lighting shall be provided at the sign, and sign shall be five feet by two and a half. Monument sign on a six by one and a quarter masonry base. So those are the proposed conditions, and then I'm gonna show some maps on the screen. So this is, um, the site plan that was done by Chambers Engineering, and, uh, you, as you can tell, the proposed lighting and the proposed signage, um, is also on here. Um, the little white boxes that you see just point out what the conditions are and where they are on the site plan. Um, the house that is to the west of this site, um, is owned by Mr. Um, Estridge, as well as those outbuildings. Um, this is just something that I did to kind of give an idea. This is not drawn to scale. This is just an approximate location of where it would be, um, on the property currently, um, as you can tell. And that black trim, um, would be the proposed conditional district area. This is also just another map, um, similar to the first one. It just doesn't have an aerial view. These are just topo lines that, um, were put on, um, the map, and I believe the next one is similar. Yes. So, um, I believe that's, oh, I'm sorry. This is just a full aerial view with no, um, storage site plant on it. Um, this just shows you Substation Road, Ridgecrest Road, Joy Road, and just that general area. Um, it is, um, generally single-family dwellings, residential, um, in that area. This is, um, a map of the land use plan, um, and just showing that it is in a rural preservation area. The property lies kind of southeast of that Lambert, which is in the middle of the screen. Um, and as you look towards the bottom, that is where the growth area starts, but this property and its surrounding area does not fall within that. Um, and that, um, you can see it kind of in the bottom corner, but the Y is the town limits of Red Cross. I do believe. The cemetery that is right next to the property is an active cemetery that's used by Ridgecrest Presbyterian. Um, and also, I'm gonna go back to this slide right here. So the two, um, I guess, project lines that are, um, adjacent to the cemetery, those are proposed to be, um, a six-foot-high wooden fence, a wooden opaque fence that obviously isn't gonna be able to be seen through. Um, but the rest of the property is barbed wire fencing. And I believe that is all that I have for you. So if you have any questions, I'd be, happy to answer.
Bailey, you mind going back to the list of conditions, please?
Sure.
Uh, storage unit number shall be five feet tall?
Yes.
Five feet tall? Or five inches tall?
Five foot tall. Wait, I'm sorry. I don't know if I, like, the height of the storage unit.
Numbers, unit number shall be five feet tall.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, that, that's my fault. Five, yes, sorry. I did not interpret that correctly. Yes, you're right.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Any questions for Bailey?
Yeah, how about clarifying what you just asked?
The storage unit, this.
Two, three, four, five, six, number six down, it says, "Storage unit number shall be five feet tall." That's the numbers on top of the building? That, the unit, it would say A-one, A-two, A-three?
Of course, be five inches.
Five inches tall instead of five feet tall. All right. I was reading that. I thought maybe I'm.
Well, I obviously read it wrong also, so I don't feel bad.
All right, any questions for Bailey?
Bailey, could you go back and show the aerial photo and point out where the cemetery is? 'Cause I don't see it.
Yes, um, so if you're looking at this one, the cemetery, um, is that bottom square. Um, I don't know if that makes any sense, and it has existing cemetery. If you're looking at it, the third green one from the left, which is your right.
See the sign, Bill?
It's right below there.
Right to the left of the sign on this right.
If you're pulling into the driveway, it's not the first parcel on the right. It's the one as you're entering the second one.
Can you go to the next slide where that line is red? I think it's a clear spot what's in there actually.
Any more questions for Bailey?
Yes, what, what, under the current zoning, which is part of the new land use plan, if nothing has changed, what, what could be put on the property?
Sure.
What other options do they have? Could they put a development there, or?
Um, short answer is yes, the property could be subdivided, um, per current zoning. It's zoned RA, so four lots or less is a minor subdivision. Um, and our ordinance currently allows for thirty thousand square foot lots, um, in the RA district. Forty thousand if it's in the watershed. Um, so four lots or less is minor. Anything over that would have to meet major subdivision requirements. Generally, RA is used for low-density, um, things like greenhouses, um, uh, group care facilities, those types of things, or group homes, excuse me, um, and boarding homes, lodging, those types of things are allowed. Essentially where people stay, I guess, is an easier way to put it.
Any more questions? All right, thank you, Bailey.
You're welcome.
Uh, at this time, I will open the public hearing. Are they want anyone here to speak for the proposed conditional zoning?
Gentlemen, I'm, I'm Sam Estridge. I'm the owner of the property. I just, I thought that young lady did a good job. The last time I was in here were these people that voted me down. They were talking about how the traffic and congestion would be created. And I think during the week, you might have five people to come in there. Weekends, maybe twelve or fifteen, but it will never be a traffic problem. I purposely had the property presented in the middle of the pro, eight area so that it wouldn't irritate anybody anymore than it had to. Ms. Peggy Springer is here, and she does my work. She collects the money and rents these places. She's been doing it for a long time. But she does Hatley Stores, which is just past Burleson Square. There's three, two-hundred and thirty-six in there. She also does, um, Hammond Stores, which is only fifty there. American Stores on Hillco Street, she does, oh, there's a hundred and thirty-two in there. And then I got eighty-two at various places. I wanna let her come up here and talk to you and explain what's going on. This should not create a problem for anybody. The traffic that they implied last time was exaggerating. But then, you mind if I bring Peggy up here? Peggy.
Do you don't mind just stating your name, ma'am?
My name is Peggy Hearn Springer, and I do work for Mr. Estridge. I also work for Terry Dennis, Sam Griffin, and Harold Sharp. Um, I'll be happy to answer any questions you ask, but other than that, I really don't know what to tell you other than I am, I have my office at, uh, twenty-four twenty-seven bypass, right beside of Habitat. There is no confusion. There's no congestion. There's never been an accident there because of that storage facility. Everything is quiet. We don't have people coming in roughhousing. There's no damage to the property. They don't throw out trash. Uh, they're not, they're not corruptive people. I do have altogether four hundred and ninety-eight buildings that we, um, rent. They, right now, we have a vacancy, and all of these four hundred and ninety-eight are less than ten. Storage facilities are, are profitable business. They're a necessary item. And there was a survey, um, three years ago in the Charlotte Observer that said one family out of every ten in the United States of America had a connection with a store. with a storage building. So if I can tell you anything else, I'll be glad to.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Anyone else here to speak for the proposed conditional district? All right. Anyone here to speak against it? All right. Come on up one at a time and just give me your name, please.
I might know where any of y'all been out there and see how that road comes around there. I'm out there at least every week through the summer because I've mowed the cemetery and keep it up and grazed. I lay off, graze when somebody is buried. But you can't see far, and you... Well, to the left you can, but for the right, you can't see very far. Somebody coming out there with a 30-foot camper or something that's parked in there, you can't just jump out there. A short truck, you can. My little trailer ain't but about six, eight foot long for a home of war. I can get out, but you just can't jump out because you got gravel roads. You'd be spinning. And I just don't think that's a good location for that. Of course, I ain't trying to, you know, tell somebody what to do with their land because I know I'm a farmer and I got land, and if I want to put down a well, I got to get permission for they want to put it, not put it where I want it. So I just don't think that's a good location for something like this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else to speak against?
I've been there probably this year, almost 40 years, 39, 40 years, and the traffic on that road is really... Just come to my house and see it and watch. I'm down below down in Mosehamber. I'm three-quarters from where they wanting to build us, whatever you want to call it. But I'm going to tell you something right now. We were there first. I wouldn't come to your home and try to drive you out. So why did they want to come and drive us out? Because the traffic, I can't even get on my own driveway. And it's... I mean, I pull trailers in and out and all that stuff there, try to. I got a neighbor or two that's around here. He said, "I about got hit." And I said, "Yeah, watch it." And they said the traffic won't get... To be no worse, that's bull. That is bull. Because I can see it, and all you got to do is just sit at my house and watch it twice or three times a day. We got a racetrack... I'm going to rename that road Ridgecrest Raceway because that's a damn hell of a place to try out a car. But I'm going to tell you right now, they say it won't bother us, it will bother us. How many on the board would like to have that in your yard? Please raise a hand. Just... I mean, I'll shut up in just a minute. How many up there would like to have that thing in your yard? And that is disrespectful. That is disrespectful to them people at the graveyard. That's disrespectful. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, sir. All right. Anyone else?
I'm Ellen Gaskins, and I have spoken to the surrounding police facilities, and I have asked for statistics, but I couldn't get any of the short notice that I had. But I did talk to one officer, and they did state that these things do increase the crime, and as far as the noise, it will, because I partially manage a senior home that is behind one in Albemarle, and they do cause a lot of noise. We've had our tenants in the building complaining about the noise coming from them, storage facilities that's right in front of them. So there is store... There is noise. There is traffic. As far as the church, I am a member of Ridgecrest Presbyterian Church, which is adjoining the... This property, we own the cemetery, and it... We feel like it's desecrating our cemetery. You can't guarantee that when there's a funeral or people visiting their loved ones that are buried there, that there's not going to be noise out there. I have great-grandparents, grandparents, my father, my husband, my daughter are all buried there, and when I want to go visit, I don't want loud music. I don't want people over there revving up motors or cussing or whatever else they're going to be doing over there, or trash that's going to blow into the cemetery. That's desecrating our resting place, their resting place. And the crime rate, they can't say the crime rate's not going to grow up because there is a lot of crime rates in them facilities as far as people using them for like a stash house that they stash their drugs in, or people coming in to break into the facility just to steal whatever they want to steal. But... And then two, it is in the curve there that you see, you cannot see. If you're pulling... I have a camper. I know. When you go to pull that camper and you want to swing in somewhere, you're going to have to go out. Coming from Red Cross, you will not be able to see the traffic coming from the other direction until you're out there and you're turning, and they won't see you until they round that curve. And they will be people getting hit. There will be property destroyed because you can't see. No matter how much he's going to clear it, you won't see that around that curve. So it's... It desecrates our cemetery, and it's a traffic hazard, and there is a lot more traffic than what was done, what's that, five, six years ago in 18? That traffic's increased, doubled. People use that going to and from Oakboro. They go to Charlotte that way. They go to Locust. So that traffic has really increased, and it really is a safety hazard also.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Hi. My name is Sharon Lehman, and I live across the street from where they're intending to put this storage facility. I purchased my property in 2014 to live in a rural farming community without those types of businesses. I know that these businesses do bring traffic. They do bring crime. People are there all hours of the night, and I am highly concerned about living across the street from this. The other thing I'm concerned about is if I ever have a need to resell my property, I wouldn't want to live across the street from this, so I'm sure I'm going to have a very difficult time in selling my house. So I would hope and ask that if you would consider living across the street from this, then you vote okay, and if you would not want to live across the street from one of these, you just vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
I do believe I've talked to most of you on the phone, decent conversations with the majority part of you. As you can see on the map that you may still have up on your computers, because it is still up on this one, right around a cemetery. I personally have family buried there. Where I live in the Ridgecrest community, my family, my children are the seventh generation, not only on our property but in our home. These are the kind of things, if you looked at the maps earlier, I do not believe I see any, and I mean any other business in this area similar to this. There's a reason for that. This is a rural area. This is where families come to have peace and safety and know their children can run around outside without having to worry about what's going to happen. Bringing things like this to this community is one against this county's growth plan. It's against what this community believes, as you have seen profusely from this community. I'm sure some of you may have been even called by some of the members in this community, as I believe I've heard. It doesn't fit. If you want to take it and ruin an area that is beautiful, that's in farmland, and I believe... I believe it might have been you, Mr. Barbie, that said something earlier to the Oakboro Fire Department about if you raised property taxes, we're going to chase you off, correct? Yeah. Well, bringing in buildings like this will bring in subdivisions, bring in other things, which will eventually raise taxes, and let me tell you something, you're right. We will chase you off.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Speak against. All right. Here... All right. Come on up, sir.
My name's Henry Dry. I'm... I'm not trying to tell anybody what they can do with their land. I don't want anybody to tell me what I can do with mine. But that being said, we wouldn't put a bar beside a school if a cemetery's not a sacred place for peace and to go visit those that have loved and died. What is? Where do we draw the line? I don't want to go see my father, and I know nobody else wants to, or their mother, or bury anybody and hear backhoes digging, or jet skis revving up, or just a bunch of screaming, hollering, carrying on, people loading up for the weekend. I get it. We need progress. I understand he owns the land. He wants to make a profit. I don't hold anybody against that, but we got to draw the line somewhere, and some things are sacred. This just ain't the place for it. Not encompassing a graveyard. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
I would like... I forgot to tell you guys. Me would like for you guys to... I only have one copy for you, so I'll hand it to the gentleman here on the end, and he can take a look and pass it down. This is a petition with over 100 signatures on it from people not only in the community but landowners that also own land in that community, saying they are not for this facility.
All right. Thanks, sir. Anyone else to speak against? During that, I will declare the public hearing closed. Okay, what's the pleasure of the board? Yes, sir, Mr. Barbie.
I'd like to have a question about the public land on board's direction. I have a question as to whether rezoning the Ridgecrest Road official district area is voted for. Please go with yourself. This facility will be located, area applies a big rule of reservation area, and recently adopted an empty plan, commercial development, and the rural preservation area.
All right. Thanks, sir. I have a motion to deny.
Second.
Second. Second by Commissioner Keen. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just... I just want to say that, you know, I've been a commissioner for a while, and there was a time when we were almost approving pretty much everything, but lately, we're really trying to look at what the land use plan is, especially with the land use plan that we just approved a few months ago. You know, it's something when you have a land use plan that's 10 to 15 years old, and this does not fall into the land use plan. And in addition to that, the... You know, we have... We put together boards for a reason so they could listen, you know, they could listen to people also come through with recommendations, and they did vote 7-0 against... Against, you know, against the switch out there, so... My two cents.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else? All right. I have a motion and a second to deny. All those in favor say aye. Close. Motion carries 7-0 is denied. Next item is ZA 23-05 text amendment, group care facility, and our presenter is Ms. Bailey Rich.
Hello.
Hey, Bailey, how are you?
I'm good. How are you? Okay.
Bailey, Bailey, hold tight a minute. I'm going to let those folks clear out, if you don't mind.
Yeah, you're fine.
All right, Bailey, I think we can hear you now.
So the next item that I have before you is ZA 23-05. Before I begin, I would just like to share that this text amendment was brought upon by individuals who are looking to put one in the county. So I'm just going to continue on. These text amendments would allow a group care facility to be located following the issuance of a special use permit by the Stanley County Board of Adjustment on a parcel of eight acres or larger in the RA Residential Agricultural Zoning District and also in the RR, the Rural Recreational Zoning District, and to amend the definition of group care facility to include any facility licensed by the NC Department of Health and Human Services under NC Administrative Code 27G. If the amendment to the definition is adopted, group care facilities are defined as nonprofit facilities or any facility licensed by the DC NC DHHS under NC AC 27G for the purpose of assisting more than 20 residents recuperating from the effects of drug or alcohol, runaway children, or battered individuals, or to provide shelter and supportive... And support for those who are handicapped. These types of facilities are not an alternative for incarceration, but serve primarily for counseling and rehabilitation. Some facilities are short-term, which could mean 30 days or less, and some are long-term, generally up to a year. The requirement for eight acres will create some separation from adjoining properties and differing uses. Currently, these districts allow group home and boarding and rooming houses, but do not allow larger group care facility. The RA District allows for nursing, rest, or convalescent homes, which are assisted livings, with no acreage restriction. At our meeting on May 8th, the Planning Board recommended approval of the proposed amendment with the additional requirement that each group care facility would need to be reviewed by the Stanley County Board of Adjustment through a quasi-judicial hearing process for a special use permit. This would result in notification of the proposed use of the parcel to adjoining property owners and consideration by the Board of Adjustment of any significant neighborhood impacts. The Board of Adjustment would have much leeway in adding requirements to ensure that any group care facility does not have a negative impact on the area. No Stanley County zoning district currently allows for group care facilities by right or through a special use permit. The Planning Board agreed with the planning staff that there is a need to allow this type of facility in appropriate locations and unanimously recommended adoption of this revised amendment. These facilities would serve an important role in the community and region to assist individuals in their recovery and treatment. It may be worth noting that the Stanley County zoning ordinance allows nursing, rest, and convalescent homes with no limit on the number of occupants by right, no special use permit on any size lot in the RA zoning district. So this is just a highlighted version of what would be added. So in our ordinance, under the RA and RR districts, there would be an added use that says group care facility on parcels containing eight acres or more, and this is Section 13.3 of the zoning ordinance. This is the current definition. The highlighted in yellow is the section that would be added into the ordinance that would be amended is the license by the NC Department of Health and Human Services under the NC AC 27G. I apologize if there was any confusion with this or if you didn't receive enough material for this. Group homes are an allowed use in the RA District. Group homes and group care facilities are two different things. Group homes allow for a less number of people, so one of the options is six or less, one of the options is 12 or less unrelated individuals, and the previous history of the individual staying there does differ in some aspects. A group care facility was brought to the board as a... Just an allowed general use in those districts, but the planning board felt more comfortable making it a special use permit. The acreage requirement was put in just because of the large number of people, and it allows that separation like it was stated. Obviously, as the board, you have the authority to amend or update or however you see fit, but those were the updated changes that were proposed, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Anyone have any questions for Bailey? Yeah. I've been confused on this. This really could be any...
This really could be any number of things, reasons to have a, you know, a group home, but a facility, care facility. And has there any consideration been taken for the people that live around these areas? That property that joins this?
Sure. I will say that since this is a text amendment, it's not necessarily mailed out to anyone because it doesn't affect a certain area per se. It would potentially affect the whole county. So at the planning board meeting, there were no individuals in opposition at that. It was obviously put in the paper, and it was put on the Facebook page for the planning department, so it was advertised, I can say.
Mike, or Commissioner Barbie, are you speaking to people who would be by this, would live by this, this, a facility, a proposed facility, and what consideration would be given to them if somebody petitioned for a special use permit?
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't interpret your question correctly. So what the planning board proposed is that this would go before the Board of Adjustment. The Board of Adjustment serves as a quasi-judicial board, and in order for a group care facility to go into the area on per se, and parcel of eight acres or larger, it would have to be approved by the Board of Adjustment. And if that were the case, and that were to be one of the uses as a special use permit, neighbors within a hundred feet would be notified, a sign would be posted on the property, the agenda would be posted, and individuals would be able to come in and speak. The only difference in that mainly is that for a Board of Adjustment, it's factual based, it's not necessarily opinions. So for instance, someone that lives next door would have to give a factual information of why it would affect their property in a negative way. If that, does that answer your question?
All right, any more, any more questions for Bailey?
I've got one. I know that the city of Almaral now, and I know we're different county versus city, but I know that they're going through some issues now where they had a zoning ordinance or whatever, where they couldn't have a group home within a quarter of a mile of each other, and then turns out that they ignored their, ignored their own ordinance and allowed them to come in. Would something like that play into effect with us on this? I know it's eight acres, but if they had a hundred acres, could they put eight house, or ten group homes right there in a row?
Currently, under this, yes.
And we wouldn't have no say-so in that matter.
Because it doesn't, it's not an added requirement to this per se, so as of now, based on this language, that's before you, yes, it could be on parcels next to each other.
Thank you.
Any more questions? All right, hearing none. I will open the public hearing. Anyone here to speak for or against text amendment ZA twenty-three dash oh five group care facility? Or against? All right, hearing none, I will declare the public hearing closed. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Need to get more clarification and some more information on this, I'll have to table this to the next meeting.
Second.
All right, I have a motion, I have a second. Would that be, Andy, would that be our meeting in July?
I would do it at your July, your regular meeting.
Oh, regular meeting. Okay. All right, I have a motion and a second to table this till the July tenth. Regular meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries seven oh. Thank you, sir. All right, our next item is item number nine, Stanley Community College Board of Trustees' Appointment, and our presenter is Major Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. In your packet you have a letter from the Community College Board of Trustees and the President, Dr. Renamite, requesting the appointment of two members to the Stanley County Community College Board of Trustees. In your packet you have a list of folks that have applied. There are currently two members. Um, there's, you know, those, those seats are currently filled, and so the pack, the packet has the, all the names of the folks that are interested in, in being appointed to fill one of those two seats, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Send one of the two seats?
There's two seats, you need to fill them both.
Okay, thank you.
What's the procedure, how we're going to do it, one at a time?
Do you do nominee using in vote for each nominee?
I would say typically what we've done in the past is to have a nominee, have, take, take nominees, and then you would vote, you know, for, for each nominee, each member would get a vote for that nominee, and so you, you wouldn't be able to, you know, if you had three nominees for one of those seats, you'd have, you could vote for one. You wouldn't be able to vote for all three.
So each person has a vote? Each position?
You, you, yeah, you would get it, you would take a nominee for each position, so let's just say you had three people nominated for the first position, and then each member of the board would have one vote for one of those three people.
All right, all right, thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to nominate, I'm going to nominate two individuals, or should we do one seat?
I would do one seat at a time, just for, just for ease of the process.
I'll nominate first position, I nominate Dr. Gerald Poplin.
All right, any more nominees?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Melvin Poole.
All right, anyone else? All right, hearing none, I will close the nominees for this appointment. All those in favor of Dr. Gerald Poplin, if you would, just raise your hand. Two, three, four, five. Or Melvin Poole. One, two. All right. So, Dr. Poplin received five votes, and Melvin Poole received two, so Mr. Poplin will serve one of the vacancies. All right, I would open up the floor for nominees for the other vacancy.
I'd like to nominate Cody Honeycutt.
Okay, anyone else? Anyone else?
Now, the two members that are on there only served one term, correct?
Yes.
They could, they're eligible to re, to serve again.
Okay, I'll nominate Joseph Burleson.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else? All right, I'll close the nominees at this time. All those in favor of Cody Honeycutt, please raise your hand. Or? Or Mr. Melvin Poole? And Joseph Burleson. All right, congratulations, Cody Honeycutt received four, Melvin Poole received two, and Joseph Burleson received one. Anything else, sir?
That's it for that item.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Can I ask you a good question real quick before you leave?
Me, me?
So, yes, yes, yes. So up in, up in Raleigh, they were working on a thing to change the appointment process from taking a pick away from the governor, and most counties I think they have a school board, the school board and the counties, they picked the other two, but we had two, and they were going to change that. What, what happened with that up there?
So currently, as it stands, majority of community colleges, there's four are, four are chosen by the governor, four are chosen by a, the school board, and four are chosen by the county commissioner, so that makes up the twelve, I believe, that's right. Ours is slightly different, ours is eight by the county commissioners and four by the governor, currently. There is, there's legislation that's moving its way through the General Assembly, and it's actually, I believe, from what I understand, is included in the Senate's budget proposal that passed the Senate. So it's sort of a policy decisions inserted into the budget that would basically reduce the number of commissioner, commissioner appointees by half, and the, the General Assembly would do the, would do the eight. And so if that's the case, and it's effective July one, and these terms are effective July one, it could be that one of these terms would, we would lose one of these terms, and that we would have to, we'll have to come back and have one appointee. I think the chance of that happening is somewhat limited because July one's moving, is getting here quickly, and my guess is if those appointees are already in place and they adopt this sometime in July, that they're not going to retroact it back to July one. I would think they would grandfather those in, and then through attrition, they would implement that. So I think these are probably fairly safe, and we won't be asking you to undo something or appoint something, but I, I can't tell you what's going to happen in Raleigh sometimes. It's, you know, things happen up there and move pretty quickly, but the way the budget, on my understanding, the budget negotiations are, that's, that's not going to, I just don't know if that gets done before July one. It may, but, so, we'll just see.
That's why I make a comment, hopefully for our representatives up in Raleigh. I tell you, we had some very good applications for the positions that were, for the two slots that are open, and I don't understand why they would be taking away local control on us making the decision, because we all know most of the people that put their applications in, and to make decisions at a local level via Raleigh, and I don't know what the procedure they'll use to make, you know, to pick.
Similar to, similar to what the governor does now. I mean, folks locally who have connections to the governor, folks would, folks will apply, and, you know, and they would, they, they would be considered. I mean, so, but that's, I mean, that's pretty consistent with all the state boards, so, or a lot of state boards. I mean, there's Rural Infrastructure Authority, there's, you know, there's, you know, there's arts commissions, there's all kinds of state boards, so, yeah.
Why they want to take it over?
All right, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Next item is item number ten, North Stanley High School recognition, and our presenter is Commissioner Trent Hadley. Mr. Hadley?
I just want to thank the guys for sticking around from North Stanley High School. It's been a long meeting. And the guys I want to represent are North Stanley High School football team, and I'm not recognizing them for their win and loss records, but for their dedication to the student athletes. And when I call your names out, would you please stand up? Chad Little, eighteen years coaching, is now the head coach. Jeremy Blake, twenty-eight years coaching, assistant head coach, and also offensive coordinator. Chris Maiden, nineteen years coaching, defensive coordinator. Andy Lucas, ten years coaching, offensive line coordinator. And... Todd Helms, eleven years coaching, he's kind of the utility coach, and also has eight years coaching basketball. So combined total, just football coaching, there's eighty-six years here, and these high... I know. But these guys have went over and above for years and years and years, and I just wanted to rec, recognize them, and I think we need to recognize people like this who are giving of their time freely and putting back thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars, saving us here, trying to help the school system, so. And I think Todd Helms had some comments. Todd, if you would come forward.
So first of all, thank you guys for recognizing us. We appreciate that. We don't do it for recognition. The ones that really need to be recognized is our wives, the ones that stands beside us, the, the, absolutely, the ones that spend times, raise our kids without us during the season, that allow us to be the ones that, the people that we are in the community, so kudos to them. We spend a lot of time away from homes, our families, our wonderful wives are there to make sure that we're keeping up with things. They also find their place in the school volunteering. They find their, just to be with us just a little bit more, and it, it really goes a long way. Pam Blake, she's the active Booster Club president. Rebecca Little has spent years and years on the Booster Club, as well as helped Chad run the youth league for eight years. Liz Maiden has spent countless hours at the fieldhouse doing stuff that we don't want to do, clean bathrooms, you know, all that stuff has to take place, so she's, she's always been there for that. Dr. Dawn Lucas, she's the ex Booster Club president, she's our active photographer, she takes our, all our action shots and our headshots for our programs. And last but not least, my wife, Jenny Helms, she's, she's been on the Booster Club for eight years, she's been the treasurer, she does all the concessions. Most importantly, she deals with me. Yeah, I, I suppose most of them know my wife and myself, so, yeah, absolutely. As coaches, we don't put time and effort for recognition. We do it for the love of the kids, the school, and the community. The supplement that we do receive, I'm sure that all the guys will agree, we, we give back to the kids, the school tenfold, okay? We, we always give them back to the kids, there's always somebody that needs some cleats, gloves, a helmet, a chin strap or something that can't afford it, especially Chad. Chad goes above and beyond. Our real payment that we receive is when an ex-player comes up that's been to college, he's got his wife, introduces this to his kids, bragging about his career, bragging about his house that he just built or purchased, and more often than not, it's in our community. So they're bringing their kids back to our community to raise them. They, they shake our hand, look us in the eye because now he's a young man, and says, "Coach, thank you." So that goes a long way. Again, thank all you for recognizing us. Again, we don't do this for the recognition, but I, I am very proud to be a part of this group of guys that I call brothers. We hope to keep making a better, our community a better place and producing young men to, hoping one day to pass the torch. Thank y'all again. No comments.
Thank y'all so much. The, your dedication shows, and I know you don't do it to be recognized, but again, thank you so much for everything that you do. You know, the old saying is, it takes a village, and you guys are part of that village, so again, thank you very much. All right, this time we got board closing comments. Commissioner King, I'll start with you. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I missed a consent agenda. I was going, I was trying to get out of here.
I make a motion we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, sir. Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose? That's the reason Andy volunteers. He wants me out. Now, board comments, announcements, and committee reports. Commissioner King, I'll start with you, sir. All right, Commissioner Shudo.
Just quick, to speak to the sports, thanks, thanks for all you guys do in the north side of the county, and I think this year we've had a lot of state champions throughout the different spring sport, I mean, the winter, fall sports, and with the help of statistics from Charles over there, shout out to Kelsey Burleson for winning two state championships as a freshman in the sixteen-hundred and the thirty-two-hundred meter run, and that's tough because they're pretty close together when they run those. And as a freshman to win two state titles, congratulations to her. West Stanley Girls, fourth straight softball championship, and that gives them sixth overall, which ties them for two other, only two other teams in the history of North Carolina softball, women's softball, to have state championships. So if they win another one next year, go for five for the row, that'll put them right out on top, and they have, thirty-one wins was the most, they overtook South Stanley, which was at thirty consecutive wins, thirty-one consecutive wins. That, that's really incredible. And then, very good. Anson Bearcats did lose to them two to one, so that was one of their closer games of the year. But anyway, and in the, in Almaral Track, you have Akaya, Keela, Keela Garrett, she's going to go to the university, commit to the University of Texas, and she won four state championship medals at the track meet for one A. She won the, she was part of the four-by-four-hundred relay team, and I think Dolly Clayton are, from the DSS, her daughter was on that, Abby Jet was on that team, and then she won the two-hundred yard dash to one-hundred... And then she won the two hundred yard dash, the one hundred meter hurdles, and the three hundred meters hurdles. And that's her specialty is the three hundred meter hur, hurdles. And she set state records in the three hundred meter hurdles and maybe another one. And she has fourteen individual state championship medals in her career, so. Kudos to Stanley County sports.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Crump?
No comment.
Commissioner Hadley? Commissioner Lawhan? Vice Chairman Barbie?
I gotta make one comment.
Yeah, I know you gotta make that.
You gotta make.
You go right ahead.
But I'm really proud of the West Stanley. Anybody's ever actually seen them practice, they are really devoted and they play as a team, so I'm really proud of those girls.
Thanks, sir. Yes, sir. I was trying to watch the, or listen to the game and catch the score, so, yeah, it was, it was exciting. But again, gentlemen, thank you so much for, for being here tonight and for what you do for our kids, it, it means a lot. At this time, I will recess this meeting until Tuesday, June third, thirteenth at three o'clock for our budget workshop in the Joshua J. Morton Conference Room. Have a good evening.